Okay. I will call this meeting of the Sandpoint Planning and Zoning Commission to order. It is June 12, 2020.
Mr. Commissioner?
Yeah.
It is June 16, just for the record.
What did I say? I guess it doesn't matter what I said if it was wrong. Okay. I see, it's because I'm reading off of an agenda that says June 12.
Oh, it was posted June 12.
Yeah. Okay, so. Getting down to business, I'll call the roll. Moes Dunko, not here. Boris Shuk?
Present.
Boris, John Hastings?
Here.
Jason Walker?
Here.
Slate Camp?
Here.
Kate Huesman?
Here.
And myself, Tom Riggs. Are there any general announcements from the commissioners or public comments?
Chair?
Yes.
As I was beginning to tell you before the meeting, we have two public hearings. One is a variance for a carport setback. The other is a condition of huge permit for food trucks and health care spending at Cedar and Alder.
So if you, please let us know, we've noticed those for public hearing and we do need a quorum to act on them.
Aaron, could you repeat those dates? You were coming in and out and now you seem to have arrived.
I'm sorry. July 7.
Okay, so it's just that one you emailed about earlier? And was there another one in addition to July 7?
There are two public hearings for July 7.
Okay.
Now, when you emailed earlier, Aaron, I think there were quite a few responses and I was a maybe, but it looked like there was going to be a quorum whether I was here or not. I guess people just need to confirm that that's the same or say something if it's changed.
I'll be here July 7.
I'll be here.
I'll be here.
I probably will be here, yeah.
Sounds like you got a quorum.
Are you going to be here?
I'm not sure, but I'll talk to you in advance, Slate. I'll give you a heads up if I'm not going to be here. The next item on the agenda are the meeting minutes approval from our minutes from our May 5 regular meeting. Are there any comments, questions, or if not, is there a motion? Comments, questions, corrections?
They looked fine to me, I move to accept them.
We have a motion for approval, is there a second?
A second.
And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Are there any no's? Any nays? Looks like it's unanimous of those present. Next item on the agenda is new business, item number 6A. I'm sorry, I'm still reading from the wrong thing there. Item 5A, discussion, the topic is comprehensive plan draft existing conditions report, and that will be presented by Aaron Qualls. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I did prepare a presentation with, I thought, some of the highlights of the draft existing conditions report, which we provided in your packet. It is still in draft form. And I hope, I know it's long and it's got a lot of meat to it, I hope you've all had a chance to at least take a look. Part of the reason we thought it was appropriate to bring to you at this stage is so that we can kind of all kind of wrap our heads around where we're at, so that the next phase of goals and objectives and our future land use map changes, so that it can inform those processes essentially, so that we know, so we can better have a sense of where we might be headed. With that, if you like, and feel free to stop me at any time, I can kind of go over some of the highlights that I teased out. I didn't get everything in there in this presentation, of course, because like I said, it is fairly needy. So first off, just kind of overall process and schedule, where we're at, and then I'll go into the existing conditions report and then we'll talk about next steps. So we're still kind of in the draft, in the preliminary plan, we've been doing a lot of work in the background with our consultant around gathering data, looking at potential developments, trying to get our heads wrapped around population forecasting and where we may anticipate growing and what areas in the current land use map based on feedback may deserve some attention, some potential changes, et cetera. So, and again, feel free to stop me at any time, we're certainly, we've seen a lot of growth, not just here in the city, but regionally. From 2010 to 2018, we've seen a lot of growth in the region, in Dover, Ponderay, and we want to add Cootney into this too, that's one change that we'd like to make, City of Cootney, and then of Court Lane. Sandpoint hasn't seen as much growth, but there has been, I'll kind of show that in a second. We also, one of the things I teased out of this that I thought was interesting and something that we talked a little bit about earlier today, Commissioner Riggs, is over, right now, over 40% in Sandpoint are above the age of 50. This is kind of a cohort analysis right here, and a comparison between 2018 on the right and 2010 on the left. So we've kind of changed as a community as a result, and the 50 and above are kind of, pardon the pun, over this hill here. Sorry, I couldn't resist. So in trying to forecast, which is very difficult, and as some of you who've been around a long time may recall, in our existing plan, we forecasted, it was 2.5%, we had a high, medium, and low projection, and the council went with the median projection of 2.5%, and that did not happen. You can see here, it's kind of interesting, right at this peak where my cursor is, if you can see it, is right about when we adopted our last comprehensive plan, and then what happened? The recession happened. But then recently, we've gone right back up to where we were projecting, and this is not just based on census data, but also based on existing permit data and a lot of local information that we've been able to collect. Aaron? Yes? Question, so in 2000, like 2, right after 2008 to 2010, was there an actual drop in population? There was. Really? Significant. Yes. Where'd all those people go? I haven't asked them individually, but. So if you recall, that was right about the time Coldwater Creek. Right. They went, actually technically bankrupt in 2013, they dropped a lot of staff from there, a lot of people were forced to move away and sell their homes. I know enrollment dropped in our schools, I believe.
It was also after a really hard winter in '07, '08, and we saw the same decline in all five of Maryland counties.
So as we all remember, that was kind of an extraordinary time for really the world, as now is, frankly. So for the next five years, we're anticipating a fairly rapid growth rate, and that's based on some existing developments that we have in the pipeline, some of which will be coming before you, as well as other pending projects that are not quite in the pipeline. So we anticipate bringing online within the next few years, potentially around 400 housing units. So that, that among other factors, as well as the last couple of years of permit data, is why we're forecasting immediately in the next few years, a higher growth rate. But we're still, you know, this is still reflecting a more conservative based on historic trends as well as existing development, 2.7% through 2040.
So you're referring to expected growth in housing stock. On what basis are you assuming that the demand will be there for people to move into those 400 new homes? Could be another, what, 1,600 people in our community or 1,500?
All seasonal, you mean?
No, I just mean, if we were to have, if the current recession were to follow the, anything like 2008, 2009, we could just end up with a huge glut of housing and falling real estate property values if, no, I mean, I don't personally believe this is going to happen, I'm just saying on what basis is the city planning for population growth when 11, 12 years ago, we had our population decreased during the last recession?
Right, so it's a good question. This recession, which we're officially in as of a couple of days ago, is a little different, I would say, than the last recession, which was triggered specifically through the home mortgage crisis. This one, just, you know, and this is not collected data, but from what I've heard regionally throughout the state and throughout the region, is that there is a very high demand for people moving here. Real estate agents, their phones have been ringing off the hook, I've been told, I've been told that a lot of short-term rentals are booked through the summer. We also know that a lot of very large companies in large cities are, have announced to their employees that remote working is working and they can expect it to continue even after the pandemic ends. So for a variety of factors, this recession, you know, at least what we, what we're hearing and seeing now may not be like the last recession, where some areas certainly will, may see it drop in real estate, but other areas may see an increase. Now, to answer your question about, you know, recent housing stock, that has been a response to demand of people moving here even before the pandemic. So a variety of factors, but how do you predict the future 20 years out? You really can't, but the thought is to, you know, the need is to have some, some sense, some informed sense of where, how, what our population forecast may be so that we can plan for it. And so, sort of a similar question, I wondered about the 400 units myself, that I suppose goes hand in glove with the projected population growth. If the population growth falls off or doesn't occur, I presume those 400 units wouldn't be? Certainly, that is a possibility, frankly, anything is possible. But we don't have a lot of data or reason to suspect that, at least in the near term, that population growth will decline and there will be a glut of housing. But we could be wrong.
Do you have any data or inklings on the demographics of this increased population? Is it going to be retirees or families or?
Well, certainly, I think we can anticipate, based on the previous slide, we've definitely seen, especially compared to 2010, a huge influx of retirees. Now, as, you know, the baby boom generation, right, is a very large generation of, they won't live forever, will it be, will new workers, younger workers, remote workers take their place? We are seeing, starting to see a lot more remote workers, and that's, I don't have specific like census data or even, you know, survey data on that specifically, but I can tell you that the developers that I talk to often, whereas a couple of years ago, they were selling houses all to retirees, now it's a lot of, even before the pandemic, it was a lot of remote workers from larger cities. So there's a lot in flux, and I know it's, it looks really clean to just throw this graph up there, but to your point, predicting the future is not an exact science. Yeah, I don't think anybody predicted this. Right. A precise pandemic.
Actually, that's, it was predicted almost to the year, about 10 years ago.
Okay. I stand corrected. So where we've seen a little bit of pause in commercial development, we have not seen any pause in residential development, even after this, the pandemic started.
I mean, I tend to agree with these projections and just anecdotally, there, it seems like there's more pressure than ever and the, I don't want to say like a de-urbanization, but kind of a re-ruralization as the cities become less and less desirable due to social distancing, and big companies realize they don't need to keep all their workers in a box five days a week, they could be working remotely and be just as productive.
Yeah, and remote working is, is a trend we were already seeing, and, you know, having talked to a lot of other planners in rural communities and just kind of keeping my ear to the ground on this stuff, it's, it's really, kind of the thought right now is that it's accelerated existing trends faster, such as remote working, and given the investments that the city, the renewal district, state has made into fiber infrastructure, as well as private companies like Ting and Fatbean and Intermax, that, with that infrastructure in place already ahead of this, you know, pandemic, is another factor to consider. And, you know, we're kind of getting ahead a little bit, but that's, that's something that we've, you know, we've come back to the consultant and that we've, we've kind of revised this existing conditions report, and we're taking a look at it with, you know, draft goals and objectives as well, to consider those, those potential futures. So that's, that would be, you know, if we do stay on that trend, that would be roughly a doubling of population in 20 years from now. Same prediction as the last plan, so, you know. So again, your point is well taken, and that would mean approximately 3,000 housing units somewhere. And is there still sufficient acreage within the city to fit in the housing units in this population? Probably not, it may push our city limits out a little bit, which is why we have an area of city impact, and that's something that I've also been kind of gathering data on to provide to our consultants, so that we can take some potential futures, where in the area of city impact are we most likely to grow? And how much, and how will we grow? Right? And that kind of brings me to the, the next slide, which is a, as we all know, a huge priority based on the feedback of the community to, you know, and I guess I want to be clear, like this, when do I say we're forecasting population? It's not that our target goal necessarily is to have this much population, it's, it's just a forecast so that we can accommodate growth in a way that preserves character, that preserves the values, of course, that we hear people want to preserve, existing residents, and also that we can do it sustainably, right? Fiscally, environmentally, socially, et cetera. What you see here is just kind of, well, it's some historic properties in the downtown, as well as the historic district, which is actually a very small area in the downtown, and this larger blue area is the result of a citizen advisory committee tasked with looking at, you know, what areas are, that you would identify as kind of the broader historic area of downtown. Certainly preserving and enhancing community character isn't necessarily limited to the downtown area, but these were kind of called out based on, you know, recent supplemental efforts leading up to the comp plan. Again, I'm just kind of pulling out some highlights here, feel free to stop me if you want to delve deeper into any particular subject. Arts and culture, we just signed a contract with a firm to lead us through an arts and arts, culture, and historic preservation master plan. That just happened late last week, and we're really excited to work with them, so more to come on that, the target is to have that plan in place by November. And that's going to be, you know, not just where statues would go or murals, but also what kind of arts programming incorporate, you know, kind of a broader, broader spectrum of art in the community, as, and as well as historic preservation. So, and that may have direct implications on, on your future work in terms of planning and zoning decisions.
Aaron?
Yes?
I'm just looking at the size of the historic district and the number of buildings on the historic district. What kind of restrictions does that put on development of those properties? And I noticed it somewhere, I can't, early, I can't find it exactly in this, this 47-page document you sent us, but it indicated that people come here for skiing, shopping, and relaxation and getting, you know, using the lake and mountains. Essentially, everything is outdoor focused except shopping, and this may seem bizarre, but I, it never has occurred to me to go anywhere specifically, I mean, shopping as a recreational activity isn't really within my wheelhouse, but I'm wondering to, how is the historic preservation thing, is it related to shopping? Do shoppers really prefer that? You know, genuine historic environment, is that something we need to preserve? If shopping is the big indoor thing that people do in our area, is, is historic preservation therefore important?
So, yeah, you raise a couple of good questions. And potentially some edits that we should make to somewhere in the existing conditions report or the final plan, which is, is downtown Sandpoint, that, that area, is that an attract in and of itself, that traditional historic development pattern? And so that's a, that's a great question that maybe we'll, we'll look at.
The other?
So, and your question kind of goes towards, you know, placemaking, right? What makes a place where people want to be? And what's a, what, is that?
Yes, and to what extent does being on the national register limit what property owners are able to do with their properties?
Getting to that, getting to that, I guess I would posit that irrespective of a designated historic district, that, you know, places that attract people, places that are comfortable to be for people, such as traditional downtowns where people typically go to see others and be seen by others, is in itself a, an economic development strategy, right?
Well, that's the goal, that's what we've been seeing for the last couple of years.
And maybe by shopping, we don't necessarily mean just buying stuff, but also going out for a beer, renting a bike.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so I need to maybe expand my vision of that a little.
The craft beer, budding, budding craft beer industry in our town. So absolutely, and it, so, you know, it's a planner term we like to call placemaking, making places that are attractive for people, that draw people and create economic benefits, which traditionally older neighborhoods typically do for the simple fact is that they were, they were typically plotted and built before vehicles became the dominant form of transportation, started to take up a lot more of the public realm. So it's kind of, but, you know, of course, we have to balance those needs, right? So that's the challenge, and that's what the multimodal transportation plan, as well as the comp plan with land use primarily, is seeking to kind of, seeks to reconcile. Now, to answer your question about historic districts, so this is a designated historic, just a small area here, this hash mark down First Avenue, primarily to the west side of it, as well as up Cedar a bit, is a designated historic district that comes with no restrictions, unless the city decides to impose them. What it does allow for is it's more incentive-based, where it allows for property owners to potentially apply for tax credits and potentially other grants to improve their buildings. But certainly, that's going to be ultimately this body's call to recommend further restrictions if you think it appropriate. The wider area is not established at all, this is really just a, based upon our advisory committee feedback, so it's something to consider going forward, again, whether or not it's incentive-based, or whether it's restrictive, or a combination, or nothing at all, ultimately is going to be something for you as a body to hatch out, as well as the city council.
So I think you made an important distinction for me, though, that our national historic district, as a district, comes with no restrictions. My understanding is that properties on the national registry do have restrictions, is that correct?
If they want to maintain their status.
Okay. But presumably, they could give up their status and still be in the historic district and attract the shoppers and bike renters and beer drinkers if that's what worked out best for property owners in our community.
Right, and there are currently eight historic properties, but many more that have the potential to be on the register and are considered contributing buildings to the district. And even being a contributing building to the district and having that potential designation does, as I understand, there are incentives out there, not administered, not from the city, but from, through the state's historic preservation office, through tax credits, et cetera, to, for improvements to their building. And we typically, anytime someone wants to do something to a building in the district, I think we talked about this, oh, it was the historic preservation commission I talked about this with, we typically put them in touch with an architect, Drew Schippo, so that they're aware of, you know, if they want to maintain their status and if they're, you know, so that they're aware of potential incentives and so that they can also keep their existing status.
Is there a qualifying process to become, I mean, obviously, the age determines a historic building, but it sounds like there's eight, there's more that are, that qualify but aren't.
Yeah, and it's kind of, it's evaluated, it's evaluated by the state historic preservation office ultimately, and typically through a consultant, as I understand. And it's not just the age, if a lot of changes have been made to that building, like there were a couple of very old buildings in, on the east side of First Avenue, but the changes made throughout time disqualified them as a contributing building to the district.
Be modern?
Or just altered the historic characters, and I'm, I'm reaching the limits of my knowledge of that there.
Well, you've answered my question, I think, thanks.
Okay. You bet. Just a minor question, on the, on the blue map here, there's a reference at the middle top of the blue area to the federal building, is that the building that McDuff's is rebuilding? That's correct. And they have been in touch with Schippo, they're, well... And they have been in touch with SHPO. They're, well, anyway. They kind of had to be for another reason. They have EDC loan tied to their improvements and that ultimately is from one federal source and they don't want, you know, federal dollars competing with each other, so they you know, had to be in touch with the State Historic Preservation Office because of that. Okay. Land use and growth, this is really to be continued. But I did include some highlights on the next slide. We've thrown up some data that we've put together here locally through the talents of our GIS specialist. On the right, you see kind of a unique analysis. It's a assessed value per acre analysis. So that's the value of properties per amount of space they take up in the city. And that kind of interesting thing is you can see that downtown, despite a lot of really aged buildings, really performs very well from the perspective of the amount of land that it takes up. So that's just kind of an, you know, existing condition we thought worthy of including in the report. And then, of course, which you're all pretty familiar with at this point, the existing land use map. So some of the highlights in the existing condition report around land use and growth, and this kind of tees us up for our pending discussions about how we grow and where we grow and and what that may look like is that currently medium density residential is kind of the dominant land use. We're not an exclusively single family city. We're not, it's fairly diversified. And then for four point two square miles of the city, but then another twelve point five square miles to the west of city limits where is is our area of city impact. And that is subject to renegotiation and we're going to be doing some, we've already provided a lot of analysis regarding topographic features, for example, areas where city services are likely to extend or not, based in part on topography. So that is something that, you know, following our planning efforts, I know that we would likely be engaging with the county on to take a look at because it is negotiated with the county. The county has ACI agreements with every other city in the county. Basically, the what those agreements amount to is that we have an opportunity to comment on certain types of developments within that area of city impact, but is still ultimately under the jurisdiction of the county. Go ahead.
Does Sandpoint's area of city impact include parts of the city of Dover?
No.
So just unincorporated Bonner County, north of Dover, west of Sandpoint?
Yes, and you can kind of see, you kind of imagine know where the city limits are here. And then these areas here are the area city impact. So we do have area city impact extending north, but primarily it's to the west. And it got really interesting when the last time ACI agreements were negotiated with Dover. You know, having their ACI kind of dancing around ours and so.
Green is the ACI or?
Well, it's a few different colors. It's this, I think it's blue here and then green and then this other blue, is that purple?
Always asked you to say.
I know, yeah. I am. I have to continually ask our GIS guy to like, look at a color palette that is designed for
go with stripes and polka dots. Purple, green and blue. So are any of those areas of current areas of city impact receiving city services?
Great question. There are. There's not many areas that receive sewer service. There is one or two areas that are. Our water service area currently is, you know, we serve water not only to Ponderay and Cootney and Dover, but also to the Seringo Water District, has their own district. So yes, it is. Yes, we do. We have. Now, raised a lot of interesting questions that we'll look at. We get the goals and objectives. Is that a good course for certain types of services versus others? Because, you know, one of the things we rely on to maintain services and infrastructure is our property tax base. But if if we extend services where people can do like smaller lot sizes in additional density, we don't receive any of the property tax revenue, but it puts a more of a demand on our services, not just for the pipe and not just for the pipes, right, to extend those services, but to the plant and also to our parks and our streets, et cetera. So that's something to consider as we look to fiscally responsible and sustainable growth.
Did you say that Sandpoint provides Dover with water?
Well, through Seringo Water District. Seringo Water District provides water to Dover, but we provide water to Seringo Water District.
I thought Dover had its own system.
It's got its own wastewater system. Am I accurate?
Yeah, I haven't studied that extensively on the projects we have there.
We have that water tower and then there's the Seringo Water District immediately has the property immediately next to the water tower. Up there today, actually, that property is for sale. What's the purple area on this map represent? And what's the difference?
Is that where my cursor is?
Yep. Directly west of the railway.
So right now, this is our existing future land use map. That is context area one point five. And the context area one point five calls for more clustered development and the preservation of open space. We kind of targeted clustered development, if that makes sense. Now, you know, if we look to the future land use map, maybe if we can, we can get a little bit more fine grained about that, where the clustering may occur. Right? Taking a real fine grained look at where services are likely to expand, where growth is likely to occur, based on existing transportation infrastructure and where services, you know, currently end, water and sewer mainly. Moving on. You ready? Housing and neighborhoods. As I mentioned, we have a relatively diverse housing stock. We have seen a sharp rise in both rents and sales prices for single family homes, although the census currently says that our median home value is two hundred and twenty, I think. Local data and knowledge indicates it's closer to two hundred and ninety thousand. And then with median rent being up, well, census actually has our median rent currently at nine hundred and seventy four.
Who's your spell checker?
Sorry, what is it?
Posing. Who's daily D write that for?
It's Canadian pronunciation.
We're really pushing the city limits north.
I was working on this up to the minute. I apologize.
It's fine.
It's just a ball.
And I also threw in a graphic. So a lot of a lot of residents are cost burdened. I think it's I think for homeowners, it's actually gone down. That might be because of the, we've had a bit of a rise in median income. But for renters, it's, I think it's at fifty seven percent are cost burdened, meaning they spend more than thirty percent of their income on housing. And that's that's significant. At the same time, we
I'm sorry, did you say fifty seven fifty seven percent of city residents pay thirty percent or more?
Of renters.
Of renters.
Yes. It's close to sixty.
So I'm reading that rents have increased by thirty two percent since two thousand and ten.
That's correct.
Sounds right.
Same time, we've seen a rise in short term rentals. And that is that is actually something that we heard was a real concern in our in our surveys. So what you see is a screenshot I just grabbed for the meeting that shows roughly about a hundred and fifty short term rentals, known short term rentals within the city, and that's kind of them platted there. So.
Is the city still operating on a cap for short term rentals?
Only for non owner occupied. So if it's owner occupied, then you as long as you get a permit and you meet our health safety standards, fire extinguisher, ingress egress, smoke alarms.
It's all coming back now.
Yeah. So.
So this this chart showing sixty or about fifty five short term rental permits in two thousand and nineteen, is that is that non owner occupied or is that?
No, that's all. That's total.
So fifty five.
Yeah, and that's in all zones. And the non owner occupied only that's specific only to residential zones. Right? So in the mixed use residential zone or any commercial zone, which there are a lot of dwelling units in, still need a permit, but it's not, there's no cap on the number of non owner occupied. As I mentioned, our median income kind of went up a little bit recently to forty one thousand. We still have a lot of fairly high, you know, it doesn't tell a whole story, right? The median income in census. But as we have twenty percent of the population and fifteen fifteen percent of families live at or below the poverty level, thirteen percent of households earning an annual income less than ten thousand. Now, we have to, we have to understand that a lot of those could be seniors, right? Because we have a high senior population. So that's something that we may want to just drill in just for the sake of accuracy in our existing conditions report. And then I think we still have a little bit more work to do on the data for industries. I'd like to, I know that we have almost fourteen percent manufacturing that's not currently reflected in the existing conditions report, so we want to make sure that we address that. No surprise, we see our largest industry is healthcare and social social assistance, which speaks to the high retired retired population in the city. The existing conditions report does talk about potential growth prospects, professional service businesses, such as corporate headquarters or, you know, small tech firms such as Coachava, for example, small and medium scale manufacturing firms, like Tamarack Aerospace, for example. Residents and tourist service providers, of course, retirement services, which I mentioned, and then also remote workers. And education, although we saw kind of a not a drop, kind of a stagnation there for a little while. But the school district is projecting a ten percent increase annually through two thousand and twenty eight, and that's based off of a recent demographers report for the school district.
Guess that might have been a pre pandemic estimate, though.
Yeah. Well, yeah, well, enrollment. Yeah, and maybe it's more will go remote and at least for the next year. I don't know. John, you may have better insights.
Yeah.
About that.
I know we're preparing for declining enrollment.
Well, maybe we need to reach out to the school district and get some at least get some qualifying language. For the near term, if not longer.
That's right. It'd be a short term thing.
Public facility services and utilities, this includes transportation. So we know that, again, our aging demographics does put some additional strain on services, particularly as well as the seasonal tourism seasons, on fire EMS and other resources. And we anticipate that future growth forecasts predict it to put additional strain on existing infrastructure and you know, all the master planning we're doing is going to also lead into a capital improvement plan, which will inform fees, of course, to pay for those those help pay for those needed services in order to maintain the quality of service that we have or whatever quality, whatever level of service the council ultimately adopts for arcs, streets, fire and police. So our multimodal transportation planning is ongoing and here's another announcement for you. We have a sidewalk workshop. We have three different workshops scheduled, morning, afternoon and evening for this Thursday. It's going to be right here. We're gonna you know, let people in trickle in a little bit at a time to maintain social distancing. But if you have a passion for sidewalks or even a dispassion for them, we welcome you. And to find more information on that, sandpointidaho.gov forward slash multimodal. And then natural resources and hazardous areas. So a couple of highlights here that I teased out is that certainly the surrounding features in the lake are we know are from multiple planning efforts are very important to the residents of the city and they provide really critical natural infrastructure for drinking water and wildlife habitat. And provide a lot of really important recreational opportunities, which is a economic development. Which ties directly to economic development. What you're seeing on here is kind of a map of potential hazards, including a flood flood plain and also a map showing where the wildland urban interface is, primarily again to the west of Sandpoint. And that sort of, I think that's red, areas kind of denote where there's a current mix of people and a lot of wild potentially wildfire prone areas. And if you talk to our fire chief, he'll tell you that that's those are really areas of concern that we should plan for really intentionally with regards to the threat of wildfire. More people you put in them with, you know, a lot, a lot of things can be considered for planning in wildfire prone areas, right? And so that's something that you know, and maybe that's its own other master plan. Now, there is a hazard mitigation plan, but how do you get in front of that with appropriate planning? And it takes participation between multiple agencies and certainly the county.
Does the city of Sandpoint provide any fire services in those areas of city impact outside the city limits?
Yes, yes. Through the joint powers agreement, the Selkirk Fire EMS, working with, I guess that's West Side Fire District, provides response in those areas.
Aaron, do you know what is meant by these definitions? The yellow people in the the yellow within the city is they're calling it interface and then, or I guess this isn't helpful to you. Most of the city is a color that indicates its interface. And then west of the city is intermix and north west of the city is no housing or very low housing density. Does that mean that the entire city is at the interface and needs to plan for the threat of wildfire?
Well, well, it's a good question. I don't want to speak for, you know, a fire department or experts on this particular subject matter, but my understanding is the interface is kind of the urban area. But yes, a wildfire and just some of the workshops I've been to around this, depending on the winds, a, you know, embers from a wildfire can travel up to twelve miles. So certainly the city itself is threatened by a wildfire in close proximity.
This idea of intermix west of the city, do you? This idea of intermix west of the city, do you know what that means?
Yes, so that's an intermix of development and wildlands.
Okay.
And those are, as I understand, typically areas most prone to... Most dangerous and the hardest to fight, right? When you have a lot of structures and lives to save, that means a lot more resources are needed to fight fires in those areas. It also creates potential for more ignition sources.
So, just in terms of the new comp plan, I'm just thinking of the old one. I don't recall making much plan for wildfires at all. And it sounds like, or it looks like, we need to be thinking about that more in our updated comp plan.
I'm inclined to agree. And in fact, that's something we called out specifically when we released the RFQ for this comp plan update.
Okay, thanks.
And it's certainly something that has definitely captured the imagination of residents and the county in recent years, as well as the nation.
Could be a requirement or a... I'm sorry, Kate.
Oh, I'm just thinking, yeah, it's maybe an issue for people in the county. But in the city, I have perhaps naively felt like, well, we've got water on two sides. Maybe we are not at so much risk, and maybe that is naive. That's all I was fixing to say.
Yes, I don't think the urban area of the city is necessarily free from the threat of falling embers from a wildfire necessarily. Again, I'm not... It's not my... Or a firework. Or a firework, yeah, certainly. So, those are all the kind of highlights I've teased out with the existing conditions report. Certainly, there's a lot more in there. And if you have any other questions or comments or things that we may have missed or things that you would like for us to delve deeper into, please let me know.
Going back for just a moment to the provision of water services. I think the city of Sandpoint provides... I know the city of Sandpoint provides water to Serenka Water District. I think Dover pulls this water directly out of the city and treats it itself. I think Dover does have a separate... Excuse me. Dover pulls this water out of the river and treats it itself. So, I think they have a separate system. That's all.
It might be capacity challenged if they do that. And the only reason I say that or kind of qualified as something I may know to be fact is looking at a building in Dover that had water capacity challenges, not enough volume.
That could be to a lot of old infrastructure from the Serenka Water District.
You got 50 CFS in the river. There ought to be plenty of water there.
Smaller pipe diameters. There is no potable water system, you know, operated by Dover that I'm aware of.
They do have a water treatment plant right there in Dover Bay.
Waste water treatment plant, yes.
Well, I just... I just... It's not a big deal. I just did a little quick research while I was sitting here, and it appears that they have their own filtration... Their own pipe in the river and then a filtration system plant. Not a big deal.
So, on the wildfire topic, which I think risk mitigation is always good, especially knowing that, you know, fire can threaten the city or anybody's house around it. Do the fire departments collectively reach out to property owners with suggestions for possible hazards that may be on their property to try and control?
There are fuel reduction programs. And that's... And how much education they're providing, I don't know.
Time to time, there's been offered, you know, landscaping to be fire resistant. But I don't think it's ever... There's never any kind of... I don't know how direct the outreach is to try and bring people to that. It's kind of more like an ad in the newspaper, "Come to this if you want." I don't know that they go to individual homes in that most risk-prone areas and invite them more individually or not. But I do know they do outreach like that.
And certainly, I know the fuel reduction program is something that certain property owners take advantage of.
Well, it's interesting. And we have very, you know, recent history with the winter fire that burned the buildings down that the fire department was able to contain. But still, you know, a lot of damage done for a city this small. You know, what if you scaled that out another half added to it? People are more aware these days of what they might be able to do in their communities to make them safer.
I think those are good suggestions.
Changing gears a little bit, if I might. Are there any industrial hazard areas that have been identified?
There are brownfields, yes. There's a section on brownfields. A lot of them have been remediated, not quite all of them. And, you know, DEQ has been working for many years now, following the last comp plan, to work with property owners in remediation. Milltown was a large one remediated, and there's several others kind of from Baldi. A lot of that industrially, you know, right around Lighthouse Plant. And that's been an ongoing project. There's a lot of... There are a lot of properties in town that have been remediated but still have covenants on them that restrict, like, residential use. And that's something that may inform some of our land use map updates because there's a certain area of town that allows for a lot of mixed-use development, but it's really not feasible absent a substantial and substantial investment in further remediation.
Okay, are there other questions or comments? Questions for Aaron or comments? Kate, Forrest, any questions?
I'm fine for the moment, thank you, Tom.
Ponda, did you have something? Oh, okay. Well, and I believe that concludes this discussion. Is that right, Aaron?
Yeah, I just wanted briefly, again, touch over next steps, draft goals and objectives with public outreach, as well as public outreach for some future land use map alternatives. So, that should be really interesting and engaging. And then, following that, draft plan review, and then ultimately, a public hearing by you, and then adoption by council or another public hearing or a series of them, depending on what you and the planning and the city council, how you wish to proceed. Our target right now is kind of... Looks like it's pushing towards October. Of course, we've had a lot of unpredictable circumstances, I'll say, these last months. So, it's kind of made it challenging to get the public outreach we want to get to inform the ultimate adopted plan, so.
How challenging? Have we gotten a baseline, basic amount of information at least, Aaron, so we feel confident we are getting the information or the input we need to move forward?
So far, yes. But it's going to require going into the goals and objectives in land use map. It's going to require some likely innovative techniques. One of the things we've talked about doing is maybe asking you all to host a virtual discussion and using our survey technology to push out to folks so that they can engage online that way as well. Again, we may have, you know, socially-distanced meet and greet to be determined. But up to now, we have a pretty robust database of public engagement that we've kept. So... And we've had, you know, several meetings with various commissions, including the steering committee, which has taken a very active role in taking a first crack at those goals and objectives, as well as the visioning statements. So, up to this point, yes, but still a lot of work to be done.
Do you have any public comment on the draft?
Oh, yes.
Sure, Jeremy. We'll take your public comment.
Testing, testing, testing. Can you hear? Is it working?
I hear you.
Excellent. Hello, Planning Commission. Thanks for your time and dedication to our city. My name's Jeremy Grimm. I'm the former planning director of the city of Sandpoint from 2007 to 2015. I now operate a private planning firm, Whiskey Rock Planning and Consulting. I've had a chance to read through this whole document and follow the process along. I've participated in all the online polls and a couple of the onsite events. And I directed the process in 2007, your current comp plan that you're working under. And I really just want to emphasize to the Planning Commission and the Steering Committee that, you know, robust public involvement is really critical to have a unified plan that people are going to agree with, buy into, and support. And my perspective right now, because I haven't seen other data, is that there's just not a lot of robust public involvement. Obviously, it's difficult with COVID. But you can do a lot of really simplistic things, such as door hangers, direct surveys to households. Not everyone has the Engage Sandpoint app or can make it to a small, you know, meeting at a library. So, I would encourage you to seek and really drive for a true and robust public involvement plan that really engages our community and really draws from our community what they desire our future to be. Because it's the residents of this community who pay the taxes, who pay the salaries, who pay the infrastructure bills, who should be able to dictate and direct what they want the future of their community to be, not necessarily consultants or administrative staff or other folks to this effect. So, I really encourage you to do that. Moving along, I did want to make... And this will just be a couple more minutes. The population estimates. I've worked all over the country doing population estimates and tees and studies similar to this. And I think they're wildly off. I think the growth rates are wildly off. I've gone through all the published building permit data on the site that the city provides. And the numbers that I come up with in no way even compare to the projections or the baseline data that's in here. And Jason, I'm sure you'll really enjoy digging into this. What I would recommend is on page 30, you'll see in that last paragraph, there's description of the water utility. The water utility services all of Sandpoint and Ponderay and some other areas outside, which is Serenka. That last paragraph identifies 4,900 customer counts, of which 82% are residential. If you assume each of those residents is occupied by our average owner-occupied household size, which is 2.42, you're going to end up with roughly 9,643 as a population for our whole water service area. Now, we know that Ponderay has roughly 1,200 residents. So, if you deduct the 9,643 from the 1,200 people in Ponderay, you're going to come up with a much lower number. And I don't understand what the apparent push to suggest that our population is much higher than it is and that growth is occurring faster than it is in Sandpoint is. I just don't... I don't understand what the motive or the direction on this is. So, I really... You're really the citizens who are driving this, and you have some great expertise up there amongst you. I really ask you to push back and really challenge these numbers because they really set forth the direction of the city. And they can have dramatic impacts on how the city's perceived locally and throughout the country. Finally, they can also dramatically impact our need for infrastructure and resources. And finally, on that point, a lot of you don't know this, but the water system was built with tremendous excess capacity. The new lake water treatment plant has empty skids. It was designed specifically to allow seamless expansion without building a new plant. Nowhere in this water system does it describe our total maximum daily demand, which is in September, in terms of millions of gallons per day, which would allow most people to understand what is our true capacity of the water system. And it also doesn't discuss what is the expansion capacity of that system. Again, I feel like this is a great draft, but it's really thin. And I think people really need to fact-check this and don't just take it for its face value. Really, please, I encourage you to really read this and ask good questions about the data that the consultants are pulling in here. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Thanks.
All right. Your comments are noted, thank you. The next item is any... Is there any new business?
No.
Okay. Well, that brings us, I believe, to adjournment. If everybody's ready to adjourn, I'll adjourn the meeting.
Thank you.